Expectations are and what we're going to cover. Anything we vote on before we vote, we'll have public comment.
There are a couple of things. Once, we're going to go over the budget wrap-up. And what Cindy's going to do is give you what her notes indicated, the changes you wanted to make, projections of revenues, projections of expenditures in certain areas, and sort of an overall cap at that point. Then we will have the retiree review. We'll need council action, or at least indication of where we're going to go on this. And this is that optional 1% for employees who retired after a certain date, and then the other employees who retired before that date. Again, you've each should have a copy of a memorandum that explains the retiree. The setting of the tentative millage rate, as you know, and Cindy will go over the rules about that. You set whatever the highest expectation would be. You can always back down from that because it is tentative as indicated. We put in the charter officer review, understanding that last year you all did not want to do that at the budget time, but just sort of a reminder that eventually you have to get around to that, so.
What is our pleasure today? Do we want to do it today or not? I don't have an opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that the city clerk provide us with copies of position descriptions and their goals to each of the council members so that we can review those in preparation for the charter review. I love having it on here just as a reminder, but doing it at the end of a week of budget reviews, it's really not fair to our charter officers.
It sounds like a good proposal to me. Seeing no one objecting, we'll do it that way. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Let's start with the budget wrap-up. And Cindy, if you don't mind, go over some of the items that you had. And by the way, I have my own microphone now, so.
Just want to do, as Jim said, a quick recap of the changes I noted and other follow-up items that we are going to come back to you with. Essentially, these changes will be incorporated into the budget that you see at your first public hearing, which would be the actual adoption of a tentative budget. In the general fund, we're reducing the recreation department income line item by $30,000. We're reducing the rec facilities rental revenue line item by $10,000. As far as expenditure changes, the city attorney has directed us to reduce his office furniture and equipment. I think that was a few thousand dollars, so we'll make that change. The chief and I will review the police department overtime salaries budget and have a look and see if we think that projection we've made is valid for the coming year and make any adjustments we think are appropriate. We are adding a total of $24,000 to the recreation department within the general fund for a combination of building, maintenance, labor, and materials. A couple of other changes we haven't discussed that may be made before the first public hearing. We will have updated state revenue sharing, revenue estimates for things like one cent, half-cent sales tax and those things. We'll make those. And the preliminaries I've seen show that those will be positive, so not a problem. And then we also are waiting for a couple of last numbers in insurance. And so, again, we don't anticipate any major changes, but we'll adjust the insurance for all the funds to the final quotes we get from our insurance providers. In the water and sewer fund, we will be adding some funding to the five-year CIP, perhaps part of it in next year, to address both the STEP program initiative as well as some engineering and study of the relocation of the wastewater plant. Obviously, as we went through, we had the action to update various of the goals and objectives sheets and with the specific request that some of those be more objective and have some actual numbers and quantifiable. As we went through, I noticed typos and, you know, formatting and cleanup that needs to be added, and also some backup that was provided that will be added to the capital projects book. I have a list of things that I think we owe you reports, white papers, or further discussion. One of them was energy efficiency initiatives, both in city hall and outdoor lighting and a variety of places throughout the budget, the STEP plan and how we plan to move forward, and then also some discussion or some initial planning on moving the wastewater treatment plant, engineering, financing, timeframes, et cetera. Other than that, that--
How about the stormwater district? Oh, I think that was Jim, just to begin looking at it.
That's another one, correct, yeah.
Yes, because I think we're going to get you a copy of what Sebastian has, as well as the pros and cons.
That's very conceptual, but if it would aid the lagoon. I would, do you have any more, Cindy?
That was it, and I'll add the stormwater utility concept information.
Well, I'm still not happy with Monday on the streets. And I do think that in future years, we need to have a reasonable number for '16, '17, '18, and so on. I realize, I realize that doesn't affect spending this year, but I do think we have to plan to keep the streets up. I don't know what others think, what Jay thinks, what Amelia thinks, what Ms. Turner thinks.
In that same vein, one of the action items that we talked about was, and I didn't add this to ours, but talking with the county about the possibility of freeing up that Dodger, somehow freeing up that Dodger Town debt service money, which would enable to add funding to--
Well, that would enable, yeah, that would enable funding, but I still think you, if Monty says streets take $600,000 to $800,000 a year, and I haven't, I didn't open the book this morning, so I could be wrong, but if we have $200,000 a year for the next five years, that's not responsible, that's no different than letting the pension get underfunded, in my opinion. So if we're in a cash pinch this year, I still think you have to plan that that number's going to go up in the future.
Hopefully, as our revenue increases as well, that we can increase the streets too.
The five-year CIP that I show actually has a revenue increase projection kind of built into the out-years for one-cent sales tax. And the projection I made for this year and the actual number we received were only about a couple thousand dollars apart, so--
Really good.
Well, I was optimistic, actually, I thought, and I was glad to see that they share that, you know, opinion that that sales tax revenues are rising in the state finally after years of decline. But, you know, again, the real issue becomes revenue. And in the current situation, either we have to make some other initiative within that capital budget lower, or we have to find a way to get out from under the Dodger Town debt service, which would be seven, almost 700 grand a year that we could apply to--
Well, but you wouldn't get out from all of it because I would presume that you'd be able to sell the property and recover all the debt, and that's probably not going to happen.
Well, even if you sold it at half, I mean, it frees up another couple hundred thousand dollars, which would get us to four, if that's where the priority of the council wants to be.
But I don't think you should have a budget book that says you're not going to take care of the streets in '15, '16, '16, '17, '18.
Without, but without a revenue source, we end up, we can't have a budget book that shows a deficit at the end of every year. It really is just, just a money pinch. I mean, the total of, even as it rises, of one-cent sales tax annually is about 1.8 million, and of that, we spend, you know, 700, 800,000 in debt service. So we have about a million, well, a million, two left each year to apply to the police department projects, all the fleet projects, all the public works projects, and now our plan to take care of our recreation infrastructure. So it really is just a competition for scarce resources, but certainly, how to apply those scarce resources is absolutely a policy decision. And if we need to downplay some of those other projects in order to keep our streets in stormwater in the right place, we'll take that direction.
Cindy, can you add on your list? I mean, let's get from Monty a list of priority streets, of priority spending for that. So we, you know, a lot of times when we talk about spending, we need something tangible so that we can, I guess for the lack of a better term, sell it to the public.
And as well, and as well as criteria for when they would repave streets. I know he has a formal criteria that he uses to evaluate those and establish the priority.
Maybe what we need is a presentation of the council at one of our meetings, how his program works, because he has the factors that he puts in, and it is a computer program that--
Yeah, a white paper on, you know, what he would, exactly what Jay said, what needs to be done and how he would do it, regardless of the budget, what, what the solution is.
Maybe both how he's fitted into what he has now and what he would do if he had the six or 700,000 dollars a year.
Stay it the way you want.
Well, eventually, we're going to have to find a way to dovetail that in with financing and a timeline of when we have to do things to make, because I know roads are one of those things, if you let it go too far, then it becomes really expensive.
Well, and that is one of the items that you can, if you want to go into debt service, we talk about debt service, you could, you know, fund it through issues, through loans and do it and pay back.
What's the average lifespan of a road? 15 years, 10 years?
We book them at 30.
30.
30?
But you don't get 30. Yeah, the 15 to 20 is your average, depending on the use of the road and the location and the base.
How many miles of roads do we have, Jim? It's in the CAFRA, I know. And this year, we're talking about Beachland and--
14th.
14th. Yeah, but I mean, we're talking about less than a mile, I think, or maybe a mile, something in that range.
It's over a mile, but--
I'm close.
We have, according to this, 33 miles of, no, that's tons of asphalt. Why do we not have paved miles in here? I don't know.
Well, if we're doing Beachland, it's a state road. I mean, is there a point where the state road stops?
Where, yes, it does, yeah. But we're actually doing Ocean Drive.
Yeah. We have 108 miles of paved and unpaid roads that we maintain.
So that would say that we need to do five miles a year or something, which we're not doing.
The problem with debt service, it's, is it's perpetual, so you have to keep this program up every year because of it dropping off, and therefore, you kind of reach a point where your debt service is as much as your annual spending, and then you haven't really gained anything by borrowing for it. So, you know, it's a dilemma.
Not a viable solution, in my opinion.
When we did the benchmarking, was there any type of ratio of how much spending per mile that a lot of the cities did?
Oh, I believe Monty, that might have been one of his benchmarks, yeah.
Okay, that'd be interesting to know.
You know, certainly over the years, I mean, at one point, the one-cent sales tax was almost purely dedicated to public works projects, but as we began to have other infrastructure needs, you know, rather than shoving that capital into the general fund and affecting, you know, tax rates, we put it to the money that's restricted to be spent on capital, you know, purposefully. So, but with the pressure on recreation infrastructure and the period of time during which we ignored that, now have, you know, probably $400,000 to $500,000 the next five years of needs, you know, leaking roofs and things like that, as well as vehicles and stormwater, vehicles and machinery, it's a lot of things in a very small bucket, so.
Well, I think the proposal that Jay and Plour are making, and to you, you know, Jimmy, to have you and Monty come back with what the need is specifically, what we can fit in with what we've got, and what we ideally need to do or should do, and we're just going to have to make a little bit of a cause celebre out of it and come back and analyze it and say, okay, here's what we got. I guess I'm more concerned that it, with bringing it to the surface and finding a solution, not necessarily today, but that we have a long-term solution.
We will take note that the roads are a priority of the council. We'll try to--
We just need assurance that it's going to get done.
Yeah.
I've added that to the list. We'll have Monty prepare that and put it on a future agenda or workshop. Anything else that I missed?
You never miss anything.
I did, I missed two things we just came up with.
You did an incredible job, Cindy.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All the departments did, and all the department heads, they--
I think what Jim's going to do on the water control district, and I don't know whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, having listened to a lot of comments on that to Florida League of Cities about it, but if it would be a way of helping the lagoon, we need to, it needs to be something we understand of whether we could help the lagoon with it. I don't know whether we can or can't.
It's another tax, Mr. Mayor. You know, you're either going to increase your tax or you're going to, I mean, why set up another bureaucracy and another thing, you know, to generate more tax? And that's all it is.
I think before we decide, just draw that line in the sand, I think we need to hear the pros and cons and make an informed decision, and also hear from the public. They might want this, and this gives that opportunity to do that. So I think it's worth exploring.
Well, the nice thing about these kind of things is that we don't run into the problem where we take one-cent sales tax that was meant for this purpose and it gets diverted someplace else. We have an alignment of the tax to the actual activity itself, and that kind of keeps the goal of the tax dedicated to the, to the, to the activity that was originally presented. You know, unfortunately, you know, politicians get into there, they see a pot of money, we want to spend it someplace else for some other project that has, that we think at the time has a higher use. It's not a bad idea if it's, if it's a guarantee that that tax is going to get used for the purpose that it's, it's made for.
By law, stormwater utilities are restricted as to how that, that funding can be used.
So then we would be able, going forward from that moment on, to make sure that it always gets--
It would have to address, it has to address that purpose, yes.
So, you know, that in effect, we know, I've forgotten what the numbers were, 30% of the outfalls, we have done whatever Monty said he, he had a number, it's a matter of record. But we know that we, I saw three areas this morning covered with grass. One of them was 19th Place and US 1. And we know that grass is going into the ditches, and, you know, the question is, we have to catch that grass as soon as we can. And I do believe that the public would support that in the interest of the lagoon, I really do. I might be wrong, but having the dialogue, Ms. Turner will allow that to come to the surface. They may say they don't care about the lagoon, but I do, and I'm going to bring it forward.
I object to that, Mr. Mayor, as to putting me as I don't care about the lagoon.
I didn't say you didn't. I said, they may not care. They don't care, but I do.
Perfect referendum question.
Yes.
You know, if they reject it, fine. You know, we move on.
I agree to that.
That's a good suggestion. Okay, sorry for that. Not a problem. We, again, we will get that information out to you as to what a stormwater utility is, where they're located and that kind of stuff, and then that can give you background.
And projected revenue?
Yeah, that's going to be contingent on the price, yeah. And it really is ERUs and how you assign those. Under the ordinance, typically, you'll take a typical residential lot and say, that's one ERU, and then that surfaced, impervious surface as it applies to commercial establishments and that kind of stuff would carry over. And it usually is a fixed cost per ERU. You have multiple ways of collecting it. One is the non-avalanche assessment on your tax roll. The other is you make it a true utility and you put it on a monthly bill. But we'll go into some details on that as we go forward.
Any amount of money that you generate that goes toward those projects can either increase the amount of them we do and accelerate the schedule, or take pressure off that one-cent sales tax and add to your paving. So either way you look at it, I mean, you can, you can identify what you need to do, but you can also decide to collect revenue less than that, just as a, as a moving towards the goal.
What we need to meet, what that goal would be.
The bottom line, no matter what you call it, it's going to be perceived as a tax, and in essence, that's what it is. Anything else we need to address? We will, your budget books that going forward will reflect these changes, and the information will be scheduled as we go forward on council agendas as to we make these presentations and go forward with that.
It's also our plan at the next Finance Commission meeting to have some discussion regarding the budget that we presented, as well as, you know, council's direction for changes that were made, so.
Correct.
Maybe you could just ask them about the roads thing, too, and the financing?
Yeah. Have some conversation about that.
I'm sure the people picked that up from this conversation. Peter's usually pretty attentive.
He's right here, yeah.
Very attentive, I guess I should say.
More than you know.
Glad to have him in the audience today.
Well, if you want to talk about the subjects we just talked about, in other words, the tax day, the lagoon, or those, it's appropriate right now for anyone to talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is each item, that we have public comment on each one of those, each item in the budget wrap-up. I think this would be the appropriate time for any comments pertaining to that issue. And as you go down, and when you do your retiree reviews, then have the public talk about that, and then the setting of your tentative millage.
So anything having to do with the budget work we've done heretofore, or the comment we've had, is appropriate at this point in time.
Yes, sir, and this would be the public comment.
Mr. Wilson, I believe if you--
You'll be on next.
For the record, Peter Gory, from the Finance Commission and a city resident. Going through this week, I highlighted a number of which items that you spoke to today. One of the things that was laced through all of the discussions, as you mentioned, was more specificity and metrics on goals and achievements, as well as longer-term planning in a whole host of different areas. And it came up almost at every juncture as to what the future is, and of course, some of the discussion we've had this morning. Obviously, the Dodger Town property, as you mentioned, is, could be a key linchpin if that went forward. Clearly, although the entire general fund capital program, whether it's the facilities that are existing, whether they're in recreation, whether they're in city departments, what the future is, this again dovetails into the longer-term planning as to what the needs are going to be. Obviously, stormwater, the lagoon, the streets, recreation, leisure square, and all of the, whether it's redoing the tennis courts. All of that, again, gets into what the, what you and the council and the staff and Jim and Cindy have been focusing on. The water facilities move. The whole issue that how is that going to dovetail in, and some of the recommendations that Rob made, if the public and the council deems that it's cost-effective and economic, when to move it and how to finance it, looking forward to the 2021 defeasement of, of the debt which is currently being carried. Energy efficient, we have about $400,000 a year utility bills for street lighting, for example, as well as the other, all of the other facilities, and some initiatives indeed have been undertaken. As far as the electric, the, what is underway or has been accomplished in terms of RFP for the rate structure, optimization, potential options for governance, the decommission of the plant, transmission studies, rate reduction initiatives, and the impact on expenses, a number of which are underway. And then Cindy's dilemma on customer service. What direction do you go if you do not know how many customers you're going to have in the city, whether electric, water, or solid waste? As well as all the fines and other cemetery deposits that run through customer service. So it really is difficult to plan for whether you're going to have, you know, 50,000 different bills to go out or 20. So, again, that is constantly, Cindy brings it up continuously for review with the Finance Commission, but it obviously has to be on the radar screen. Ratables. One of the issues, and of course, tax increases are always on the, or the tax millage rate is always on the front and center, but a couple of different takes at this. Only 65% of the 10,000 residences, according to the 2010 census, are owner-occupied full year. That means 35% of the capital stock in residence, and I'm only talking residents, are not in fact owner-occupied. So any reduction in the rates would advantage the tenant, or if it's vacant and not being used, that the rate would increase in terms of your taxes, but you're not getting any advantage from lower rates, no matter where they come from. Additionally, the significant number of facilities and properties for nonprofits, for the city, for the state, for the county, and indeed, for the federal government, for the railroad, which are not ratable, is a major differentiation for the city of Vero Beach as opposed being the county seat, as well as for the courts and so forth. So, in terms of reviewing the impact of taxes, you know, that's an overlay in terms of who pays and who doesn't. The Finance Commission, and I recognize that Commissioner Olds has been at every meeting, and I presume that our other members have either recorded it or read about it. And so we will bring forward a review of the budget and hit these items, as well as the entire budget, as we go forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gory.
You're welcome. Mr. Miltzer?
Mark Miltzer, 67 Indian Lailak Road. I'd like to make a few general comments about the millage. It seems like most of you want to keep the millage the same, perhaps some of you want to drop it. Anybody with half a brain knows that our millage is artificially low, and that's a result of higher electric rates. And those, that phenomenon is paid for by those of us who are least able to do it, and it benefits those of us who are most able to pay for it. In other words, you know, the people who, who take advantage of the low property tax rates, whereas the, the poorer people have to pay the high electric rates to, to make up for that, or to subsidize the, the low property tax rates. The, this whole budget discussion is based on the fact that the millage rate will stay the same. Mayors rightfully talked about possibly increasing it for roads, but the fact is, the transfer from electric to the general fund to keep those rates lower is increasing this year. And I think that's a trend in the wrong direction. My suggestion would be that we consider marginally increasing the property tax rate or the millage rate, and also reducing the transfer from electric a little bit, even if it's a token gesture. Today, we're going in the wrong direction, keeping the rates artificially low and increasing the, the transfer. I understand we're keeping it at 6% or whatever, but the dollar transfer is going up, and that doesn't allow for even a small reduction in rates. So I guess that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Council. My name's Charles Wilson, 2134 Eighteenth Avenue in Vero Beach. Thank you very much. I want to thank you all for your hard work in these budget hearings. I've been watching them, and I understand that there's been a great deal of work. It does strike me, however, that I hear the distinct sound of the can getting kicked down the road. I can hear it go plunk, 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 plunk. And, and we know it. This, basically, this budget is essentially the calm before the storm. We will see the budget process quite differently over the next few years. This is probably one, if not the, last chance we'll have to go through this as quickly and as painlessly as, as we did in this particular series. I've been watching this, I've been here since the mid-'80s, 1986 is when I came to the Vero area, and since 2005, I have sat here and I watched Jim Gabbard sit in that seat where Mr. O'Connor is sitting right now, telling the county, our city council, that pension reform is right around the corner. We're going to take care of that next year. Now, that's almost like free beer tomorrow, because it never, next year, never happens, and certainly hasn't happened, and again, we, I can hear the can go plunk, plunk, plunk down the road. We also are continuing our addiction to the electric utility transfer. We have assumed, it seems that we have assumed that we are going to be in the electric business forever. I don't believe that we are going to be in the electric business forever. I believe that, that you will see some possibilities of escaping the jaws of the FMPA over the next couple of years. Looking forward to talking about that plan. Speaking of electric, you know, we're still in a position where, there's an old saying that if you're sitting at a poker table and you can't, you can't spot who the sucker is at the poker table, it's probably you. And it seems that over the last 35 years, every single time we go to the table with a proposal about electric, we're the suckers. So it disturbed me when the issue of a utilities authority came up, and for a number of reasons. This is a memo, I hear, from the FMPA that we discovered when we found out that George Christopher was having negotiations directly with the attorneys of the FMPA. This memo was sent to Mr. Christopher describing how to set up a utilities authority. This is a directive, secondarily, a directive, in my opinion, from the FMPA to the people that can, that can-- that can, this is not a utilities authority, it is the FMPA Protection Act. Because setting up this authority, what's in this memo, it allows, it shows you how to set up the annual budget for a new utilities authority. It shows you how to establish that the utilities authority can set rates, they can set the amount of the transfer, they can enter contracts and agreements with the FMPA. It shows them how, it shows you how to appoint members to the utilities authority to basically accomplish the task of making sure that the FMPA doesn't have to deal with elections anymore. It shows how to include, whether to include outside customers or not. It includes, it shows you how to include either all the utilities or just the electric utility. Do you include the water and sewer rates, or do you include the gas company? Do you include, it shows you how to do that. At the original town meeting that we had for planning and zoning some months ago where I reside, one of the things that they said is the reason they're having trouble with their community, and they were looking for ways to develop their community better, and the reason they said they were having trouble is because the electric rates were so high that the people couldn't afford the rents and the electricity.
Mr. Wilson, just a point or, this whole topic is one that we're going to talk about, I'm sure, for months and for years, but I don't know that it hinges on the budget itself. And I mean to be respectful.
We have had, the planning, the finance committee apparently went through some 18 items the other day, and the amount of savings from going through the 18 items has come to exactly zero.
But, again, that has nothing to do with setting the city general fund and the budgets for the various entities.
What it has to do with is, you were talking about the future years as well, and what kind of reserves we have, and what kind of, what are we doing about the transfers going in the right direction or the wrong direction. So, I'm not here to argue with you. You're going to be able to do whatever that is you want for one more year. So, you go right ahead, and I appreciate your hard work on this. There are a lot of things that I agree with, a lot of things we're going to be able to work together on. I want to give you a heads up that you are not putting anything in this budget having to deal with the real problem, and that is the electric system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Further comment? Steve?
Steve Myers, Teamsters Local 769. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Just a couple of comments. One, just to clarify the record, based on the comments of the previous speaker, when he talked about Jim Gabbard sat there and indicated there would be pension reform, there was pension reform. We reduced the pension accrual three years ago for all city employees going forward. So, for someone to sit here and say, and not be corrected from this group, that there hasn't been pension reform, is just totally incorrect, okay? There has been pension reform, 40% lower for all employees going forward. Now, that was a great sacrifice to the employees. Now, the city's plan is to totally freeze the plan, which, it's my understanding, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, that the amount of the impact of this year's budget is increased by approximately $455,000 just from changing and freezing the current pension and moving forward to a defined contribution plan. Is that correct?
I'll let him answer the question, but I believe the answer is it has to do with the funding.
That is correct, and the numbers are...
It actually is just over $400,000. To clarify, that is citywide, not just the general fund, and it has exactly to do with the difference between the current normal contribution, which is just over 4%, and the proposed contribution to the defined contribution plan of 7% of salaries. So that's the reason for the difference.
And it really is, as we've presented to the council, it's to reduce the future risk that we keep accumulating in our present defined benefit plan. And so the direction that the council has been, that they wanted a defined contribution plan, and Steve, as I recall, last year, you all actually TA'd that plan, and so this year, we've sort of been a reverse of that, which I understand because we want to negotiate in good faith, and we'll continue to do that, and we are set for mediation for that process. But the council's direction is to try to reduce future risk and to quantify what our future risk will be, and that's what we're trying to do. And by going to a defined benefit plan, the defined contribution, or to go into a defined contribution plan, we can put a timeframe on the defined benefit plan of approximately 10 years, which gives us that quantifiable number going forward.
But the total increase to the cost is over $400,000, just in this year's budget?
That is correct. We do have an initial upfront cost for the change.
When does the city start seeing savings in the defined contribution plan?
In the overall scheme of things, there, you know, there's two pieces to the pension contribution. The total contribution citywide is over $4 million, it's up to about 4.6, and by far the largest piece of that is the city's payment toward the unfunded accrued liability of the defined benefit plan. That's upwards of, it's about $3.5 million at this point. So the idea of the switch to the DC is that that component of the plan would no longer continue to grow, and the city is amortizing that unfunded liability over a period of, I think we have eight or nine more years, and that component of the contribution would go away on the current plan, and we would be left with the far smaller piece, which is just our normal contribution to the plan, which would now be a DC, so.
I'm sorry, does that mean we won't see benefits until eight or nine years?
Right now, we are paying the contribution toward the unfunded liability on an amortization of about 10 more years until the gap is closed and the plan is 100% funded. And again, the idea is if we freeze the plan, the liabilities will no longer continue to grow, and all we'll be doing is continue to fill that unfunded gap until we're 100% funded on a liability that would no longer continue to grow.
If I may, the current underfunded part of our pension, our pensions are only funded 62% in the general fund.
But whose fault is that?
I'm not putting any fault, Steve, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to give a status of it. I'm certainly not blaming the employees. Anyway, but that comes to a $37 million liability. We have other post-employment benefits of $14 million, so we've got a $51 million liability hanging out there for the city. If anybody picked up your paper this morning and read the article on Jacksonville and what's happening with their pensions, I mean, this is something that we have to, we have to address. And by making this small bit, you know, moving to these plans and making a little, you know, larger contribution now, we can start whittling away at this. This is bankrupting.
But just as an example, and I represent the employees at the city of Fort Pierce, so I'll be going to negotiations with them here in a couple hours. Their multiplier, the multiplier for the city employees here is 1.6. The multiplier for the city of Fort Pierce employees is 3.0. Guess what? Their pension fund is funded at 89%. You know why? Because that employer made sure they were responsible in making the appropriate allocations every single year towards the pension plan. When you sit there and watch the pension plan go from 85% funded to 84% funded, to 83% funded, to 82%, I've watched it go down for 20-some years, every single year, and there hasn't been that council that stepped up and said, you know what? We have to stop the bleeding now. But no, they don't want to increase the millage rate, they don't want to do anything. So I've watched it go down every single year for 20 years.
But if I could, just as a clarification, we have an annual actuarial valuation, and that valuation prescribes an annual required contribution to make the plan sound. This city council has never failed to make the actuarially recommended required contribution to both the unfunded liability as well as the normal contribution. Certainly, I would agree with you, Steve, it's the case that in many cities where the pension's in trouble, councils have kicked the can down the road and refused to make the contributions that were required by their actuary, but this city has not, and if you look at the CAFR, it has made 100% of the arc every year. You know, the big turning point in this pension was 2008, and if any of us have a portfolio, we know what happened then. Once you get in that hole, it's harder to climb out, but we've never shirked making the contributions that are required, so, just to clarify.
It's true, and it's true, we've begun to climb out.
And we have begun to climb out.
Right, but other pensions, the city of Fort Pierce, they were, believe me, they were a pension plan that existed in 2008. They suffered no more losses than the city did, or no less. Look, just because that's what the minimum the actuaries tell you you have to put in, that's not what you have to put in. Realistically, when you see the number going down every single year, you have to do more. No different than, as the mayor discussed, the roads. Look, you know, you don't have to do the roads, okay, but if you keep not funding it and not doing it, then eventually they're just going to all fall apart and somebody else is going to be stuck with the bill. And unfortunately, not this council, but other councils, have not exercised their good judgment on funding that pension plan, and the employees that are in that pension plan are the ones that are being asked to suffer. So the only thing I would encourage you to do is, there could be over a $400,000 savings this year, just by exploring the possibility of, let's wait and see what's happening next year with the pension plan, and you can use that $400-some thousand in the budget to do things such as increasing lifeguards on the beach and other things that's going to help your tourist industry, which is actually going to bring more income to the future of the city. So, I just wanted to, you know, kind of a little food for thought, offer that about the pension, because it's not correct. There has been pension reform here at this city, and it was through Jim Gabbard.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Jim?
Unless there's any other comments, the next item is the retiree benefit review, and Cindy has sent out the information to the mayor and council.
Essentially, this is something that, per the city code, we're required to do annually as part of the budget review process. I've given you the section of the city code, I think you all got this memo yesterday. It's really broken into two separate decisions. One, for those employees who retired on or after October 1998, an automatic 1% cost-of-living increase is included in their pension. Any adjustments beyond that are at the discretion of city council. There are also employees in the plan who retired prior to that point, and they receive no automatic cost-of-living adjustment. So what we've given you, just as a context, is right now, the 12-month percentage change in the CPI is 2.1% for May to May, and the Social Security Administration has programmed a cost-of-living adjustment for January 2014 of 1.5%. Right now, there are 219 employees who receive the automatic 1%, and the impact of 1% for those employees is about $41,000 a year. Again, this is not an impact to the budget, this increases the disbursements from the assets of the pension plan, so it wouldn't change the budget we just reviewed. For those employees who retired prior to October 1998, who do not receive any sort of automatic increase, there are 134 of those, 1% amounts to $17,700 in total for those employees. Those employees did not receive any cost-of-living increase from 2010 through 2013 for four years, and last year, council voted to give them a 1% for 2014. So what we need is sort of a separate motion and a vote for, one, would you like to, at your discretion, increase the automatic 1% increase for the people after 1998? Would you like to go beyond the 1%?
A question, please. When we vote for an increase, this isn't just increasing that cost in one year, they get to maintain that increase for the rest of their time of receiving this pension, correct?
It increases by 1% their annual contribution.
For the rest of their life.
And then if you increase it next year, it increases the prior years.
For the rest of their life.
It's a COLA, and that's how the COLA works.
But this cost factors are...
It's a reoccurring cost.
Yeah, and that's just for this, for one year. So I want everybody to understand that, too.
Very much so. It's the same as salaries, it just brings the level up and then...
I was going to say, facing the pension shortfalls that we have right now...
So the 1% has automatically happened at this 40, and then if we want to go above that?
Correct, correct. That 1% automatically happens for the 219 employees that retired after October 1, 1998. You can go beyond that at your discretion or not. So that would be the first decision point. And as we did this last year, we had a motion and a vote, so.
You know, we have pension boards. Do they say anything about this?
We have a pension board, newly reconstituted, but it is by the code, the council's decision and not the pension board's decision.
Typically, we get some type of report or advice or something that, I mean, we don't really have any.
The problem, the pension board is made up of people who possibly could benefit from the decision.
Well, we'd still get numbers out of it.
Well, these are the numbers, I mean...
Well, I know, but these are the increases. I'd like to know how well the pension is projected to do.
Well, you know, again, we have the quarterly reports and the actuarial evaluation, we're at 62% funding, et cetera. I will tell you, Jim and I are both members of the pension board, and I don't know that the pension board would feel comfortable giving you a recommendation, for the same reason that we haven't given you one here. I mean, this is really, by the code, a council decision, and these are the numbers, and as you pointed out, they, you know, they are perpetual impacts.
As members of the pension, you obviously would say yes.
Well, if we're at 62 this year, where were we last year?
58.
Yeah, we are progressing.
It is progressing.
Possibly the year before, if you happen to know that.
She's got the CAFR, I'm...
The real key is, is our return on investments are getting better. That's really what's the indication of...
The problem is, nobody's got a good crystal ball.
That is correct.
It's the stock market in part, and if we had a good crystal ball, we'd probably...
It's gone up since 2009, and if anyone wants to bet, it'll go up in 15. I'll take the bet.
We have, for the last two years, experienced a fairly, much better returns on investment, 18%, 19% for the two-year period.
And if you watch the news today, I would have trouble being, given the whole ran, being any more liberal than we can help.
I make a motion that we maintain it without any additional increase.
I'll second that, you know, just as a notice, I mean, it does look like we've turned the corner on it, but that doesn't mean that we...
A long haul to go.
You know, I think we can be happy that the direction has changed, but we've got to make sure that that direction continues in the direction that it's going, that it's coming back. I just don't want to put more weight onto something that's just barely going in the direction we want to go.
And the key is, is the market, is the reality.
Amelia, you may want to comment, and we, this, we have to open the public comment, or should open the public comment, I believe. Right, Wayne?
Yes.
Amelia, do you have any comment?
I want to hold at the 1% that we're doing.
Public comment? Seen, and then how do we vote on this? Just...
Is it a voice?
Is it a...
I'll do a roll call on it. The motion is to maintain without any additional increase. Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
The second decision point is regarding the people, the 134 employees who retired before that date, who do not automatically receive anything. And so, the discussion, the motion and the vote would be, what if any percentage increase would you like to provide to those people? Each 1% for that group is $17,700.
What did we do last year?
Last year, you did 1%. The three years before, the four years before, you did zero.
I move that we make no increase.
I'll second it. We would comment from Mr. Kramer, Ms. Graves.
So these employees don't receive any increase, whereas this other group is receiving an annual increase every year?
An automatic increase. This group receives no automatic increase, any increase is at the discretion of council.
And this was just a factor of the negotiations that this group happened to be in that year for their pension that this group missed out on?
The resolutions that we did back in, the two that we listed up in that paragraph that modified the pension plan.
It's a result of negotiations with the employees, that we can no longer afford to have a plan that we automatically have increases in of 1% every year, Ms. Graves. So that, you know, it's just not a sustainable thing for the city to do, and that's why they do not receive automatically.
But everyone who retired prior to 1998 doesn't get it, but anyone who retired after does?
Correct. As a result of the, as a result of these modifications to the general employee retirement plan, under these two resolutions I listed in that paragraph above, it was in 98 and 2010, you know, HR is here, in case anyone there has any insight into why. I was not here, so I'm not sure why, but that's just how it was set up.
All right, Ms. Kramer, you have a comment?
You know, I've talked to some of those employees, you know, and they're older employees, they have a rough time adjusting to the changing times. However, it's just difficult for me to look at this, at the pension status, where we've just barely turned the corner, and to put more weight on that pension just doesn't seem to be the right thing to do. It's, I would much rather, would have split the difference and rather gone, you know, give them a half and give the other group a half, but I know we can't do that. I would probably be more inclined to do this next year if the pension comes back up, but I think we've really got to keep our eye on the ball with the pension.
Would you be up for a half percent this year, and then maybe a half percent next year?
Given the possibility, well, not possibilities, but the facts that the pension really...
Given the possibility, well, not possibilities, but the facts that the pension really does hinge on market prices, I mean, it's kind of like betting on the weather. I mean, I really do feel bad for those people, but if we guess wrong, everybody pays for it. You know, like I said, I would much rather, would have gone half and half with the newer and the older, but unfortunately, the rules are such that we can't do that.
All right. I share your feeling, but it is what it is. We have to call, we want to call for public comment. Anyone want to comment from the public? So we have a motion and a second.
You know, there's, I mean, I would probably, I would probably give leeway maybe to a quarter of a percentage, or something to that, because it is only 100 people. But I mean, that's just a token, I mean, we're, that's...
It's nickels, it's nickels and dimes.
Administration costs would eat that up. I mean, that's...
Well, you're already paying the administration costs, you're just changing the number, shouldn't be a change there.
But I think when you're living on a very limited fixed income, nickels and dimes matter.
Well, if you've got a, you know, if you'd like to amend or put something forward that is nickels and dimes, I don't have a problem with that.
You'd have to make an amendment to the motion that's been seconded to do that. Ms. Graves, you can do that.
I make a motion, then if we can get a quarter percent.
I'll second.
All right. Any public comment on that? All right, Mrs. Vok.
We have to vote on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment.
The amendment is for the quarter percent rate.
We're voting on the amendment, that's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mayor Winger?
No.
Now, we're voting on the original motion, which is that there, why don't you restate the motion, Mrs. Turner?
That there be no increase in the pension benefit.
All right, we've already allowed public comments, so Mrs. Vok, I'll call the motions.
Ms. Graves?
No.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
What next?
Setting of the tentative millage rate.
I'm gonna pass these out. We actually are setting two things. The tentative, well, it's actually the proposed millage rate, as it's known, and then also picking our public hearing dates, and we'll do that as two separate actions.
Oh, and you told us to bring calendars, and I still didn't do it, but I...
That's okay.
Sorry.
That was a request that you bring.
I know, she did, she did give us, she did give us warning, and I still didn't do it.
One of those is a regular council meeting date, so that hopefully was already on your radar.
As you know, as we've discussed this for the last several days, this budget is predicated on holding the same millage rate as the prior year. So what we're voting on today is the proposed millage rate, and as we go through the process to the first and second public hearings, you cannot increase that number, although you do have the ability to decrease it. This is the millage, once we vote today, that will be certified to the property appraiser and will be used for the tax notices, the trim notices that go out in early August, notifying people of the public hearing on taxes. Right now, again, at 2.0336 is what we've proposed as our budget. Just for point of information, the rolled-back rate, in other words, the rate which would produce the same amount of revenue with this year's taxable value, is 1.9728, and the 2.0336, last year's rate, represents just over a 3% increase over the rolled-back rate. The other thing that I think is worth pointing out, and I know we've talked about this in the past, the total combined millage rate for a property owner is over 17 mills. And so I know that people seem to have the idea that the five of you have a huge amount of influence over the total tax bill, but let's just keep it in context. Out of 17 mills, you control, at this point, about two, which is about 12%, and certainly the school board taxes, which are upwards of eight mills or four times your tax rate, as well as the county taxes, as well as a number of other things like water management districts and mosquito control, all impact on people's taxes. So I just like to put that in context. Our contribution's important, but it's by no means the biggest part. And so with that, I would ask for a separate motion and a vote on to, what you would like to certify as the proposed millage, and then we'll move on to vote on the dates and times of the public hearing.
I've got a, I've got a comment about that, and, you know, starting in 1971, my father said I should move down here, and I talked about hurricanes, and he said there hadn't been a major hurricane since 1938. And unfortunately, he passed away before 2004. We've got a budget, and I used the analogy the other day, we're sailing too close to the wind. At this point, I'm against a tax increase, but I'm again, also against not having some flexibility in case we have a hurricane, in case other things come up, in case we make decisions. It could be Rose, it could be all sorts of things. So I personally would recommend a minor tax increase. And I would point out to you that Sebastian, yesterday, went from 372 to 390. You know, taxes, and it is true, the taxes, this is a first-class city, and we give first-class service, and yet, I believe, there aren't many places of this caliber in Florida that are lower. There are places like Orchid that don't provide services, that are lower, of course, or Indian River shores that provide less service, although they have a police department. But I believe Marco Island is about the only one in the state of comparable that has the taxes lower than we do. I'd like to see the tax go up, and I would make an initial proposal of 204 to 214, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars. I think, I think you have to, and I'm open to other numbers, but I think it's not responsible to have a budget with a little over $100,000 of free cash, and that hurricane's coming and everything else coming. I plan to vote against any tax increase and hope to be able to vote against one when we finally get to it, but I think we got to allow ourselves some free board, to give you another sailing term. That's my comment.
To generate $100,000 in additional revenue, what is the corresponding increase in the tax rate required?
Approximately .05 mills. Each .1 mill generates $210,000.
Okay, great, thank you, I needed to...
So that's where I got my number roughly. I'm after $200,000 is what I'm really after, and that has not to do with the street, I just think we need a free board of the 100 and some odd, what do we got, 100 and what? Free board right now?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of $170,000.
So that would give us 370, and then we go from there come fall.
We also are fortunate to have a reserve of 9 million in our general fund. I know we talked about more money for outfalls, but when I'm looking at the capital projects, and I put everything that's involved with stormwater, because it comes up to about $723,000 of capital projects involving stormwaters protecting the lagoon, about 280 that actually in outfall work, and another 443 in replacing the vacuum trunk, which cleans the storm outfalls. So I think, you know, for the lagoon side, that we end up with sufficient funds. You know, when you increase revenue by raising taxes, I mean, obviously relieves the pressure on government, you know, to seek efficient, cost savings and efficiency, and that's always a concern when you look at raising taxes.
I think we're already looking at a 3% tax increase just by keeping the same millage. The amount of money that comes out of people's pockets will be more with the same millage rate.
That's true.
You know, one of the reasons we have a low tax rate in Barrow Beach is because we have high property values. The higher property values you get, the millage returns more money, and I think you see that in Marco Island. If our property value significantly decreased, we would have much higher, much higher millage rate. You know, it's an interesting relationship in that if we wanted to keep Barrow Beach with high property values, we've kind of got to invest in it and keep it that way. So I think the services are important, although I think, given that we have a 3% tax increase already, I'd kind of like to keep it there. I'm a big believer in discipline. I think if we go a little bit too far, it's just a little leeway that opens the door even more later on down the road. I think next year, we'll have higher property values, we will have more money per millage coming in next year as well. So I'm pretty happy with leaving, leaving it just as it is.
Ms. Graves?
Well, we've already talked about a few different ideas of, especially if we get any leeway with the Dodge Town property, I'd be interested to see where we're going with that before changing the millage rate. If these other avenues that we're trying to explore, all of them fail, none of them work, and we do realize that we have a greater need, then I would look at increasing the millage rate, so for now...
You realize, you realize that today, all we do is allow ourselves that possibility. I'm not promoting that we raise the taxes, I'm promoting that we allow that possibility. So if we decide today that it becomes, remains 203 and change, we have no possibility of coming back and increasing it. That's what concerns me.
We have to set the maximum possible tax rate today. You can't go, you can't go above whatever we set today.
Go down later, but you can't go up.
And I would think we would go down later, but be that as it may, you change your mind at all?
I would go with a tentative 5% to 10% increase, but I really, this is the millage rate that I want to see, so...
You want...
A 5% to 10% increase, what do you mean?
Five to 10 cents, like five, like to two...
5% of 204 is 214.
Two 10, two 13, in that, in the range the mayor gave.
Saying 213?
Mm-hmm.
And that would generate essentially another $200,000.
Another $210,000.
You want to make a motion? Drive it to 213, Ms. Graves?
Sure, I make a motion that the millage rate be set to, you can stick that on me. Go for it.
Just for me, because it has, it has to be at four digits, are we saying 2.130? Zero.
Mayor, you have some public comment? Yeah, I'll second it, and then we'll have public comment. You're exactly right.
Wait, but we're still waiting, so the motion's not clear. I don't know what the number is, since it needs to be a four-digit number, so could we please get it clear?
It needs to be four after the decimal place, so if you want to round it, it would be 2.1300.
I will use four significant digits.
Or we can go 2.1336, which is exactly .1 more.
Let's do 2.1336.
That makes a difference.
I'll second it. Have fun.
Your four significant.
Just three quick points. Marco Island is marginally lower, it's about 1.9, but their ratables are 9 billion, which is three times. So therefore, if we had a, if they had our rate, they would be not 1.9, but 6. So that is just one item. Second item is that five years ago, when we were getting five, I believe it was five, it might be six, when the city was getting 5.7 million a year in, at Valorem, the tax rate millage was 2.29. It then went down to 1.9 for three years, and then just crept up. And the last point, Cindy, as I understand it, you were saying, the council was saying it was a 170K, but I thought that was reduced from some of the...
With the recreation.
With some of the other items, so it's not 170.
Well, it went up and down with a few items. I mean, there were some additions, deletions, there are going to be some increases in state revenue sharing that amount to about 60, that sort of makes up for some. So in my looking at what's there and what I've already seen preliminarily, I think it's going to settle out to pretty much the same place.
Well, I was just taking the takeaways from the notes I made from what was being reduced, without addressing the other statements, so. But I just wanted to make those comments, and I think that your deliberations and considerations on the motion can always reduce the rate, can they not? So I think that's prudent, it's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Before I call Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, come up. This comment, too, when you look at this budget, there are 200 and some odd thousand dollars that are coming back from the insurance trust fund, right? 200 and what, 280?
214, something.
214, okay. So it's a bit artificial to start with. I mean, for five years, we're taking 214 out of a trust fund.
262.
262, I was closer. You were, I'm amazed, you always beat me on numbers. I don't remember more than the first digit usually. But, so, you know, you were talking about you have 170, but you really don't, because you have 262, or whatever the number was a minute ago. See, I've already forgotten it. And so, I mean, you just got to leave room, and Mr. Wilson probably doesn't agree with me, come up.
Let me, let me, let me get this straight, I just want to make sure, we're getting an increase from the increase in property values. We're getting an increase from the transfer from the electric utility. You're getting, you defeated an increase in the pension by a tie vote, and now you want an increase in taxes, right?
I think that...
Does that wrap it up?
Well, no, it doesn't quite wrap it up, because you've also got the money coming back from the trust fund.
Again, this is, this is the first casualty we see of killing of the electric sale, because the electric sale proceeds would have gone to underwrite the pension reform, and notwithstanding what Mr. Myers, who's a fine representative of the unions, have said, the reason that we have delayed, we, I think we subsidized the pension by, what, did you say, $3 million a year? Is that what you...
Yes, unfunded.
The unfunded liability function.
Which would have been completely gone. Just think of what budget you would be looking at if you had not killed the sale. Thank you.
All right, I, we further comment, we have a motion and a second, and it's 213, what?
2.1336, which, again, for, in the context of this DR 420, is 8.15% over the rolled-back rate of 1.9728.
There's no further comment, I'll call a question.
Repeat the question real quick.
The way this DR 420 would look, and the way your trim notices would go out, the rolled-back rate of 1.9728, the proposed millage rate of 2.1336, which is a .1 increase, and that would end up being 8.15% higher than the rolled-back rate. And that is what would go out on your trim notices to notify people of the public hearing.
And when do we have, when do we have to really determine what the tax rate is?
You have two more chances, we'll do the dates here in a minute, but I'm proposing Wednesday, September the 3rd, for your first public hearing, in which case you vote on millage, and then the September the 16th, for your final public hearing, where you vote for the last time on millage. And at each juncture, you can go down, but you cannot go up.
If we have a hurricane before September 16th, solve the problem, I hate to say that, but anyway.
Don't jinx us.
If it happens, we're gonna blame you.
I know it, I know it.
Again, as Ms. Turner pointed out, we do have a $9 million fund balance, and so in terms of big unplanned emergencies, a tenth of a mill is not going to fix a hurricane based on my last experience, but, but, you know, I understand the need for some free board for other things, particularly your concerns about capital expenditures and stormwater, but we do have the, you know, the fund balance available for a big catastrophe, so...
I think it's important to really attempt to do something on this golf course thing. I mean, I had, I had a couple people call me and say, you know, it would be worth more later on, I'm sorry, we can't afford to keep the golf course.
We are not investment in real estate holdings.
We have...
Very bad for us, historically speaking.
You know, this last year, this last year, I've heard comments about various people that are going to put paths in, you know, driving ranges, which return us nothing, and we're spending over $600,000 we can't afford, we need out, and that solves a whole lot of problems. And hopefully, that'll happen, and we'll be able to do, climb over all the hurdles. Mrs. Vok?
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
What's the parliamentary rule?
Motion fails. Takes three affirmative votes.
Okay.
But we have to come here.
Going back, yes, you have to give us a tentative, and so...
I'll make a motion, yes, to retain the millage rate at 2.0336, or to set that for extra.
I'll second.
Any comment? Comment from the public?
Comment from the public? No comment from the public? I'll call a motion.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Calendar.
Next is your calendar. I passed that out. We have some constraints when it comes to, and as you, as you remember this, and we'll go through it at our public hearings, there's lots of very peculiar little rules about trim and the setting of millage, and one of them is that you cannot hold your first public hearing before September the 3rd, which is the reason we're suggesting Wednesday, September the 3rd, for our first public hearing, and it can't be the night before, when you normally would have a council meeting. The, and then we cannot schedule ours on the same dates as either a county hearing date or a school board hearing date, and so, I've given you those dates below, and that's the reason I'm suggesting that the final public hearing be Tuesday, September the 16th, which is your regular council meeting date, and because we have to have them after 5:00, that would be scheduled and advertised for 5:10 PM, and that would have to be the first meeting. In other words, you would have the budget millage meeting at the time certain of 5:10, and then, once that was completed, you could move on to your regular council business, if that's what you choose to do.
The only item we really need to discuss is our September 2nd meeting. That is a day meeting at 9:30, if we want to continue having that meeting, and then also have a special call meeting on September 3rd, or if we wanted to move our September 2nd meeting and have it on September 3rd, starting the special call meeting at 5:10, and then going into the regular meeting at 6:00.
My concern with that is, I guess, we're only having one meeting in August, well, one meeting in July, one meeting in August. Are we going to be getting backed up with things that?
Sometimes it's heavy when we come back after not having a meeting.
Yeah, and we do have just two night meetings. That might be an awful lot to handle, and agenda-wise, just, I, I'd suggest we go ahead and have our meeting on September the 2nd.
And just have a special call meeting on the 3rd.
My suggestion, is our council.
Well, given, given my travel plans, it doesn't make a difference if it's on two days. If I've got to be there on a Tuesday, I'm going to be here on a Wednesday. It just depends on how many people are going to show up for the hearing. I mean, if nobody shows up, it, you know, it could be a 20-minute meeting.
What day is Labor Day this year?
It's on the 1st.
It just was a question, it was. So, it's a short week that week regardless. That's, that's, I guess, the only point.
So, you prefer to have two night meetings in September?
No, no, I.
That's what I'm just trying to get, yeah, what everybody thinks.
I'm open to whatever the group's open to. I don't care.
Yeah, certainly, if you have your regular council meeting on the 2nd, you can have that during the day. It's only the constraint on the budget hearing that it be after 5:00 PM.
And so, I thought, and that makes a short, you know, Wednesday, if we're just going to do a hearing.
I cannot imagine gambling that it's going to be a short meeting. I would, I would say two, two, you know, I hate to say, I'd love to have it over in one day, but I would, safe side, I'd say we do it in two.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I guess you got your dates.
Okay, thank you.
So, just give me a quick motion and a vote, that the public hearing dates would be first public hearing, September the 3rd at 5:10, and second final.
Second on Tuesday, September the 16th.
September 16th at 5:10 PM.
All right, second.
Jim, do we have?
All in favor?
Do you need a motion, or?
Yeah, we need a motion.
We have a motion.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, further business.
The, there was one other thing. Yeah, we're finished with that, because they're going to do that at a later date. Now, Mr. Mayor, I don't have, I don't have anything else at this point.
Wayne may have something. While Wayne's passing things out, I will make this observation, even though, you know, process of government is messy, and, and we never get all we want, and certainly, that's true of all of us here today, but I do think this has been a very useful budget session. We've made numbers of policy decisions, and, you know, we've, we've set the road ahead. So, I'm, I'm pleased with what we have accomplished in these four days, and, you know, thank you all for your contribution and for doing the public business.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to thank you for the amount you've put into this. As I said yesterday, I think it is good that we have these type of conversations. It's important as we put policy, which, you know, this budget is your policy statement, so we've got to make sure that we're all on the same board, on board with that issues, and having the department directors give their presentations, you all seeing them up front and personal, I think helps, and it also conveys to them your policy processes that you want to go, and it's sort of like taking the streets. That has become a major issue, and we will make sure that that's addressed as we go forward.
Mayor, if I may, what I passed out, because of the discussion you've had on a couple of different occasions this week about stormwater and stormwater utilities, I went ahead and printed out for you a particular Florida statute regarding stormwater funding, and also gave you an example of one, and of course, we can get some more, Gainesville Stormwater Management Utility, how they've adopted it and implemented it. But state statutes do authorize local governments to establish stormwater utilities, and I just wanted to clear up on the record, it is not a tax, it is a utility, just like any other, like water, sewer, electric, whatever, and the fees that go into that utility pay for the infrastructure and the development of it and so have you. I just wanted to give you those examples and make that clear, that these are utilities, and I recognize as such by the state legislature and the courts.
Okay, what else?
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have to present today.
Any other business from council? Seeing that I'll take a motion to adjourn? You are adjourned.